Waiting for December 7. Oh, there we go. Good evening. We have Councillor Tulowitzki and Councillor Pope Rice joining us via Zoom. And Coach Trager Miss, can you please call the roll?
I can't. I'm having trouble logging into the Zoom. I'm going to log out after roll and then ask to be put back in. So I just had the spinning. All right, roll call. Councilman Schoon?
Present.
Councilman Gardner?
Present.
Councilman Tulowitzki?
Present.
Virtually, Councilman Kulturitis?
Present.
Virtually, yes.
Yes.
Present. Thank you. At this time, I ask for you to join us, to rise and join us for a moment. I am once followed by the flag of the Senate.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving to the 45th Street construction update. Do we have Mr. Randall on the line with us?
Yes, we do.
Yes, this is Lee Randall with DLZ. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I'll start with Calumet Avenue. There's basically been no change. The southbound left lanes, the left turn lanes, excuse me, at 45th remain closed for construction of 45th as well as one eastbound lane at Calumet restricted so that there's no through traffic there on 245th east of Calumet. 445th Street between Calumet and Southwood Drive, wall four backfill. Construction continues. The panels have been completed and set. Relief wells have been installed underneath the roadway there on the east side of the underpass. Underground water main and storm sewer have been completed on 45th and continue there within the Camelia alleyway. Roadway lighting is ongoing. The installed lighting should be operational, most of which is, including the underpass currently. Bike path construction is ongoing. The HMA asphalt intermediate or binder course has been placed there between Calumet Avenue and the pedestrian bridge. The lift station construction continues. Expect NIPSCO to connect the electric service hopefully sometime this week. Concrete curb on 45th Street is complete. Crews are working on the center curb and asphalt paving is expected to begin tomorrow and be completed later this week at the end of the week. Temporary pavement markings, weather permitting. Hopefully, we'll have those installed early next week as well as some seating and sodding, if possible, next week as well. So based on acceleration, that has been ongoing for 37 weeks and current estimations are at 290,000. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take those at this time.
Councillors? No questions?
I guess so with all that being said, what are we looking at? Is there a possibility still of completion yet with the weather being as good as it's going to be this week?
Well, not complete completion, but certainly opening to traffic, I would expect next week. Hopefully, perhaps the end of the week would be nice if we can take the opportunity while we have that closed to backfill the curb and install seating and sodding. It'll probably take at least a day or two to install the pavement markings early next week. So at that point, then, at least we could open to traffic and leave that unrestricted for the winter at that point until next spring, when there's still some work to be done there with the walls. There's architectural surface treatment, anti-graffiti, some seal coating, things of that nature.
Lee, I don't want to snatch defeat from the jaws of victory. There's a lot of work left to do before we, you know, cap the project. But in terms of drivability, we are extraordinarily close, extraordinarily close. But when you go through, you'll say, wow, this is still a construction zone because it is. And when the weather is conducive to finishing that project completely to its fullest, then it will, then we can say we have completed it. But for drivability, substantial completion inches.
And even if we have substantial completion this year, there might be some temporary lane closures next year to complete the constructions, what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, okay. And that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillors, if you don't have any questions? I don't have my screen. I can't see you, so.
None for me.
Okay.
None for me.
All right. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the public comment portion. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council at this time? Being none. Dustin, did we receive any comments from the public tonight?
We did not.
Okay. So seeing that we have no public comments, I'll close that portion of the meeting and move to our consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Being none?
I guess I would just like to make one comment. On document or registered 20-12B, is the final payment to the resident for the backyard flooding program? Now, I'd just like to thank staff for their efforts and their achievement in this first project that we did with the residents over on, what was it, the 80,000 block of Monroe or Madison?
I'm not sure. We've done six projects so far this year. I'm not sure which voucher this is for.
But that one, I received some information during the weekend and saw that. Pleased to see that that went pretty well.
Anyone else? Coach Trager Miss, can you please call the vote?
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Mellon?
Yes.
And I have, just to clarify, Councillor Gardner made the motion. It was seconded by I of Councillor Schoon.
Yes.
We're having talk, so I wanted to clarify.
We have no old business, so we'll move to new business. The first item, A, is the 45th Street and Calumet Avenue reconstruction. This is change order number 14 for the fiber optic relocation.
Yes. This is a change order for 144 pair of fiber optic cable that is in the Calumet right-of-way. It was installed by a collaboration through Community Hospital of the Town. Community Hospital uses a portion of it. We use a portion of it in the balance as dark fiber to be used at a future date. We thought there might be a chance to keep this utility in place during construction. And conceivably, it could have been left in place, but with the alignment of the westbound turn lane off of southbound Calumet, what we found was the handhole for accessing this for maintenance, pulling cables, that kind of thing, was going to be in the right-of-way, which is generally a good place for it. It makes repairs take longer and is less safe for the people who are out there repairing. Though there was also an issue with the footing or a light pole. So it was determined that it's best just to move it and move it in the right place. So that's what we did. We attempted to keep it in place, but it just, it would have been a poor product down the line and we would have asked ourselves why we didn't do the right thing now. So I'm asking for you to motion and perhaps by roll call vote, approve change order 14 for this contract for an amount not to exceed $36,515.93.
Madam Chairman, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments regarding?
This is for the rights? Not entirely, no. I, you know, I, we, I wanted to leave it there because if we could have saved $36,000, we could have saved $36,000. It turns out we couldn't, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Move to item B, this is the 45th Street and Calumet Avenue reconstruction, change order number eight.
Yeah, so this is for the additional staining of the underpass structure. So if you look at the memo, you can see the T-wall being stained in progress. And the original contract called for this concrete wall, the interior of the underpass, to just have an anti-graffiti coat on it. I don't know if it was an error in omission or just someone thought it didn't have to look nice, but we're spending quite a bit of money, so we might as well dress it up. And it looked like an unfinished product with it as plain concrete. So we selected a stain that would match this. And you can see that on the second page. It looks like a final product now and it looks even better now that they've installed the curb and they have blacktop going on in there. So this was for the impact of this change order. I think it's a dramatic visual improvement of final product. And we're looking for a similar motion as to change order 14 for the ability to cover change order 18 for an amount not to exceed $13,276.25. As an example of the work yet to be done, the anti-graffiti application will have to be put on next construction season for this so that you'll see a lane restriction in the future because that was already an original cost in the contract package. So just an example of the punch list of the many things that need to be done until we're all done.
What was the dollar amount? Did you mention?
$13,276.25.
I thought it was, you said 15 something or other. And so I thought it was different than what I thought.
Nope.
Okay. Then, Madam Chairman, I so move.
Second.
A second. Councillor Tulowitzki?
Councillor Kulturitis. It's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can have it, Steve. It's all good.
Okay. Wait. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Sorry. So are there any questions regarding this? I will, I can say that I saw, you know, we, this was how many years ago this?
Yeah.
Like a couple of years ago, we chose a pattern and a color pattern for the stones and we wanted it to look nice. And that next to this unstained concrete looked like someone forgot to finish, you know, it didn't look right. So I think that $13,000, it's well worth making it look like it completed.
Maybe we can actually have them put a couple of mustangs on there, too.
I'm sure we could. I'm sure we could.
Okay. So any other comments or questions? Being none, can you please call the vote?
I can. Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, and President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Takes us to item C. It's Rogers Communications Canada, the final invoice for fiber optic cable relocation.
So all the way back in 2019, we had to do a significant amount of utility coordination with both the Canadian National and telecommunications companies that had fiber underneath their rail bed. Because generally speaking, you don't move a rail bed unless you're us or some other unfortunate municipality. So we had an original agreement with Rogers Communications with an estimated cost of utility relocation of, let's call it $422,000, subject to a final invoice. Well, the way that agreement was structured and the ability for a regular person to come in and see that and understand that, I think personally is probably not entirely clear. And in an effort to reduce any kind of ambiguity, I think it would be good for you to consider this change order and approve it. Now, there is a lag in the billing because you can see if you read the memo and look at the invoices, we didn't get this to town until May 2020, almost a year after that work was completed. So the fact that we got it a year later and it wasn't such magnitude, we immediately pushed back. So we had both our construction engineer, Lee and Brad, and then our design team with John Helsin at Robinson comb through this and push back, ask some clarifying questions. And then we did another round of that when the answers they gave were not satisfactory and they came back with more receipts. So what we have is unfortunately substantiated claims for the relocation of that utility in the amount of $164,853.37 that we are obliged to pay. Now, the good news is we have sufficient funds to cover this and this is the last time we'll ever have to think about Rogers telecommunications ever again.
All right.
I will make a motion that we accept or that we approve Rogers invoice for number 541409 and the amount is $164,853.37.
I'll second that. Tulowitzki?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions regarding this?
The only thing I would add, again, you mentioned ambiguity. That's all been taken out of the equation now with all our review.
Oh, yeah.
And everybody else.
So the only ambiguity I think there would be was if there were a potential audit because this is an item that is audited when we receive our audits. And we have a, the Cook Tragers office has a sterling record and I would hate for something like this to trip somebody up.
Okay.
So let's just remove any potential ambiguity.
Okay. But the work was done. We reviewed it. We contested what we thought we needed to contest and now it's, I'm sure it's an obvious invoice we need to pay.
Yeah. On that front, there's no potential ambiguity, yeah.
Understand. Okay.
And I do remember us pushing back and doing everything that we could and questioned everything and even though the amount is not, it's not lovely, you know, it was all done and it's something that we had to pay. And the problem is when you start digging?
Yeah.
Things change.
I think also if you look at the total cost of utility relocation in that corridor sprint came in a little lighter, Zayo came in a little lighter and this one's a little bit more. So overall, it's not a dramatic crossover run. And for the entire project, we're still under 10% for change orders, which is very good for a project this size.
Any questions from Councillor Kulturitis or Tulowitzki?
I'm glad this is over with. That's all I can say.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
We'll move on to item B. This is the proposal for engineering services. This is going to be 2020.
Yeah, this is some good news for us. We are anticipating being awarded $450,000 from the state for community crossing matching grant funds. And with that money, we propose to do a full depth mill and overlay of four streets, Elliott, Timwrit, Crestwood and Bluebird. Very exciting. And to do that, we need an engineer to do work in two phases. One is the design and preparation and the second phase is the owner's representative construction engineering. So me would suggest that you consider SEH, who has done this service for us since they have become our kind of in-house contract engineering firm. And they quote a price of $69,000 for this work. One would be a flat fee of $48,000 and then the second would be a cost not to exceed for a construction engineering owner's representation of $21,000. So it may be less than 69. It may be not exceed. It may be up to 69. Or we may come then, or we may come hand in hand and say, everything went wrong and we need you to authorize it.
I would move by to authorize the town manager to execute the agreement with SEH for engineering services associated with the community crossing matching grant street improvement program for costs not to exceed $169,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Who's second?
Do you have any questions?
And this is going to be announced tomorrow, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Being the questions, can you please call the vote?
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Move to item E, the impact networking, the complete care supplemental agreement?
Yep. This is just a piece of workaday business. And if you have anything in detail you want to jump in on this, Steve, please feel free to. This is for two wireless access points that we installed at the police department's request. They were having a difficult time uploading data from the squads to the servers and it was a significant inefficiency in the way they do their business. So we installed two wireless access points. Those wireless access points are now under the management of impact. So the service, service improve, troubleshoot, that kind of thing. They were not part of the previous complete care agreement because they installed them. They would like to be paid for their maintenance, which I think is a reasonable, a reasonable request. So if I would ask that you authorize me to execute that. The difference for these two devices to be supported is $14.50.
Madam Chairman, I move we authorize the town manager to execute the supplemental complete care agreement.
Second, Tulowitzki?
We have a motion and we have a second. Any questions for either Chris Tucker or Mr. Anderson? Being none? Can you please call the vote?
Sure. Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Move to ordinance 1815 for transfers.
This is what Dustin just called these a workaday type things. At the end of each year, there's sometimes a necessity to transfer budget money from one account, one fund to another. The last two years, we've had no transfer, but we like to be, have the authority to do so or be prepared to do so early in January if we need to. So we will, are asking for first reads to be this evening and then the second read will be the first meeting in January.
Thank you.
Randy, is your fiscal year end December 31st?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Not approved.
Nope, nothing, nothing on. We're all calendar year.
Okay.
I would move that we consider ordinance 1815 on first reading and schedule second reading for the first reading in January 2021.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Being none. Coach Trager Miss, can you please call the vote?
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, and President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Move to ordinance 1816. This is the credit card use for the director of Parks and Recreation.
Sure. In January, you passed a similar ordinance allowing Greg Vitale, the use of his credit card as a parks director. I think that was a wise decision and then Greg left. So you now you need to do the same thing for Mark Hites.
Dustin, did Greg leaving have anything to do with the credit card?
No.
Sorry. I'm asking in jest. I don't expect it is, but, okay.
Madam Chairman, I move that we approve ordinance 1816 on the first reading and set the second reading for the reading of February 21st.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any second? Being none? Can you please call for the vote?
Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes, Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, and President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Takes us to 2021 medical dental and vision insurance. Always a fun one.
Yeah. It is actually not terrible news this year. The town's rate for health insurance is 5%. Dental remains the same and vision remains free. So I think this is a very good renewal for us. For those members of council who are new this year, this is the first time you'll see this. So the town is a member of the AIM Medical Trust, formerly the IAC Medical Trust. And that is what's called a mutual employer wellness arrangement. And it's basically a risk pool. So the town of Munster and a number of other municipalities, only municipalities, have come together and created a trust. And through that trust, we lower our total risk pool and are able to remove the profit incentive of the health insurance equation. For example, last year, the trust had a very good year globally with their health experience. We had a very bad year. So if we were to have gone out to the market and paid what it would cost to cover the claims that we incurred, say we were self-insured with a fully insured product with VCS or UAD healthcare, we would have looked at something at 34, 35% adjustment and premium. With the trust, we were able to take some of the funds that the trust holds and they were able to supplement that increase. So we looked at a 5, 15% increase. This year, our blended rate increases over your 5%. And we are going to have a premium holiday in January, which means we don't pay the premium to the trust for an entire month, which means we don't take the employee share of that premium share out of their paychecks for a month. So this is a huge benefit to the town of Munster and the residents who don't see just a precipitous rise in healthcare premium. For your benefit, I've included at the back end of this some, just a lot of tables to kind of see what the town has been able to accomplish versus had we gone it alone or had a fully insured product. So we don't need to go into these in a great deal, but the gist is that we have, say, a significant amount of money in our ears with the trust. And I think it's a relationship that will continue to pay dividends for us as an organization. But this evening, I do ask that you, by motion and roll call, authorize me to adopt the health vision and dental rates for the town as presented.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to authorize the town manager to adopt the health vision and dental rates for the town of Munster as presented.
Second.
I need clarification on who seconded. You said you can?
Well, I see Dr. Andy raising his hand. I think he's gone.
Thank you.
I think that's four.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions?
Dustin, it's wonderful to be part of the trust and to benefit from the premium holiday this year. It looks like 183,458 is the benefit to the town. Is that exclusive of what the town employees would pay? So they're also getting a benefit on top of that 183 or is that inclusive?
Total. That's the total amount that we would have to pay the trust. So that includes both the town and employee portion.
Okay.
Any other questions? Being none, can you please call for the vote?
Wendy? Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Councillor Gardner?
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote, yes. Councillor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote, yes, and President Mellon?
Yes.
Vote, yes.
Thank you. Move to ordinance 1813. This is the amendment, amendment number five to the 2020 salary ordinance.
On tonight's agenda, we have two amendments to the current salary ordinance. This one occurred back when we were first given that initial executive order in March that asked everyone to stay home. And in response to that, the town had discussions and it was determined that we would try and work. And in response to that, the town had discussions and it was determined that we would try and work as efficiently, safely, and as far away from each other as possible. And we were able to do that for about four weeks, something like that. Some of our employees were at home, some were in the office. And then we figured out how to make it work so everyone could be in the office and work at a hundred percent efficiency. For that time period, we need to put it on public record, all state board and councils recommended, that anything COVID-related, any changes in our behavior be put in ordinance. And that's what you're saying here. Ordinance eighteen thirteen thirteen is talking about how we made that adjustment to our working hours.
Thank you.
Well, the proper thing to do is to approve ordinance eighteen thirteen on first reading.
You can read it twice. You can do it this time and then you can approve the first reading and then approve it for the second reading. You can read it again.
Okay. My turn.
Thank you.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Any questions? Being none, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor, President Mellon?
Yes.
Five to zero, yes.
Thank you. This moves us to ordinance eighteen fourteen, which is amendment number six.
Yes, this one is again COVID-related. Back in, I think it was April, the federal family first COVID coronavirus response act, it allowed for emergency sick leave to full and part-time employees. And we have abided by that and in the model, we state that there were thirty-six employees so far that have used that emergency sick leave. As a municipality, as a unit, we foresaw that some employees may not have enough sick time or vacation time available to them should they need more than the emergency amount granted to them. So the town passed an ordinance and that ordinance will expire on December thirty-first. So this is an extension of that ordinance and we will read it twice. But we're recommending extending it for the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. We don't know what any, you know, what to expect. We could do it month by month. We could do it quarter by quarter. We could do it the first quarter, month by month thereafter as the situation progresses. We do have, the first employee has already gone into the negative. So we foresee as this is an ongoing health issue, more and more employees will need to take advantage of that.
I think doing it by quarter is better than every month. The best way to do it, they're four. I move that we first reading, the second one for December twenty-first.
A second from Tulowitzki.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
My question, so I noticed we're doing it just for the first quarter. Does this ordinance have to be in place while people build back up from a negative?
No, the way that the ordinance is written and the policy is written is an employee goes into the negative and then as they continue to work for us, they will begin to accrue enough sick time. Our time is accrued on a bi-weekly basis as they get paid. And should they leave their employ before they get out of that negative, then they owe us that money.
And Wendy, if this were to expire in March, the end of March, someone's still negative in April, they can still just earn back to the point of positive, but no one, unless we would extend this again, no one would be able to go negative.
Exactly.
Again, for sick leave.
Yes, they they can have their hours in the negative in the second quarter, but they can't earn any more negative hours. That help?
Yep. Is there a reason we don't do it all the way through the first half of the year?
It's at the will of council.
Is there a problem that we don't need it after the first quarter?
No, because the way it's it's very specific to COVID-related. So if I needed sick leave or anything that COVID-related, you are unable to go into the negative. So again, that's your decision.
So there'd be no harm in doing it for six months.
I don't foresee any.
And if I understand the policy or the procedures correctly, at the next meeting, we could change that wording, make it six months and we wouldn't have to do it third reading.
I believe that's correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Do you want to keep the motion?
No, keep the motions the way it is because it's still flexible.
All right. And we may know more in two weeks as well. It's been a very involving situation.
The last two decades, my my own reflection, not reflection, but prediction of what this is going to be like next spring has changed.
Yes. Any other questions? Saying none, can you please call for the vote?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Vote yes. That's five to zero. We'll see that on second read.
Brings us to our last salary ordinance related piece of business tonight. This is for the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance.
This is the twenty twenty-one salary ordinance. We had some discussions, I believe additional discussions. The way it's written, it is for a flat two percent for twenty twenty-one for all full-time employees. There's a few other items in here. The building and community development department has requested a part-time admin secretary and they've asked to reduce their multi-disciplined inspectors. And then it details the benefits and related provisions.
I will make a motion that we consider ordinance eighteen seventeen on first read and schedule second reading at the next regular meeting.
I'll second that. Tulowitzki?
We have a motion and a second. Do you have any questions or discussion?
I guess the point I'd like to make is that this has been, twenty twenty's been an unprecedented and and very difficult year. I'm pleased that we're able to offer an increase. I know there's a lot of uncertainty in the marketplace out there and a lot of people have lost their jobs. So not only are we able to retain everyone, but actually provide for a cost of living increase, which feels pretty good this year.
Are we looking at this now as just a straight two percent across the board increase or?
We've got an average with merit.
No, that's that the how how this is written is an across-the-board two percent. One school of thought, and I think there's a lot of wisdom in it, is that this has been an extraordinarily hard year for people both at work and at home. And the idea that not only could we provide some relief in the way of a salary adjustment, we could also eliminate what could be considerable emotional stress and do a kindness and make that a straightforward thing because we all know someone who has gone through something hard and maybe not everybody knows that. So in a in a most unkind year, perhaps the best policy is to, you know, put stock in the merit system. Certainly, there's a lot of value to evaluations and tying compensation, you know, to to that merit in more stable times, either not stable times.
Any other comments or questions? I'm, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead. Is it Steve?
Yeah, I I would just echo that that comment. Also, doing it the same for everyone this year feels like a very fair, a fair approach. Let's not get into quibbling over, you know, personal situations. Let's just provide some stability for all town employees this year. I'm supportive of that approach.
I'm pleased that we can offer, that we can compensate at all because last year was a zero and it was tough. And to go back, I was afraid that we might have to go back to back zeros. And so very happy that we don't need to do that this year.
Agreed.
Can you call for the vote Wendy?
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Vote yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Vote yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Yes, that's a five to zero.
Thank you. This is to the police department agreement for the purchase of body cameras.
Hey.
Chief Shekel with us tonight?
Yeah, as we presented Board of Safety already and Councilman Gardner was there.
Yes, thank you. That way we have it recorded, chief.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
So we've been discussing body cameras this fall. We presented to the Board of Safety, Councilman Gardner's liaison, so and usually Councilman Tulowitzki is also on there. We sent out three proposals. We got two responses back. One was from Panasonic and the other was from Axon, which is also formerly known as TASER. So we kind of select our criteria on a few factors, safety being one, how well we could integrate the entire system, future technologies, cost savings, any inherent there, and community and inter-agency sharing and cooperation. A lot of the agencies in the area already use TASER, Axon, which makes it easier for us. When we started comparing both Apple's staffels, Axon was the only company that had its own software in-house. Also cloud-based Panasonic, we had to bring in our own servers. And we've used Panasonic databases in the very cumbersome. Axon has the best integrated system that flows quickly. We can look up any case in a matter of minutes and share that digitally with anybody. We're constantly burning through US foundry eyes for all requests for evidence. This is a much cleaner system. And of course, it also cuts down considerably fraudulent claims against the officer. It also gives us a leg up when allegations are made. And as you know, anymore, the first thing defense attorney asks for is body camera footage. So this system allows not only the officer there at the scene, but any officer in a geofenced area, their camera automatically goes on. So it gives you different angles of the same situation. It's wellness link to the car. It allows officers with their body camera. If someone has footage, they can share that with us immediately and we can tag it as evidence. And it all stays in a nice, neat tag. I will tell you that their evidence base is superb. We haven't seen an easier system out there to use. So all those things being considered, that's why we we settle on Axon. It's a six-year contract. We do have an inherent cost savings because we already use their products, use their tasers. Just by incorporating or bundling everything together, there's about a thirty percent savings right there. So we felt very comfortable since their products are all integrated already. Anytime an officer draws their weapon or their TASER, their camera automatically puts it on. So that's why we settle on Axon. It's a six-years contract, like I said, approximately a hundred and fifty thousand per year. And we're asking for permission to enter into agreement with Axon.
Thank you.
I would I would move that we authorize the Munster Police Department personnel, Chief Shekel and or Lieutenant Damon Johnson to enter into the agreement with Axon for the purchase of the above listed equipment and services relating to the body camera and other services.
Second, Tulowitzki?
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or discussion?
Chief, when the when the officer turns the camera on, do people at the station here, is it instantly relayed here or is it only, it goes into the memory on their camera and then they have to bring that into the station before anybody else can look at it? In other words, can somebody here know that an officer is in trouble, for instance, by looking at, by reviewing the?
Well, that's right. So if the officer does, and it's happened, officer's out of the car, gets in a foot pursuit, basically is, you know, calling for backup, where are you? This gives us real location exactly where they're at, even if they're out of the car. So we can find them more quickly, if that's your question. When we get back to the station, it's automatically downloaded and tagged as evidence. So that's the part that we administrate. But you can review it right away at the station almost immediately.
If I may, if I may add, this is Lieutenant Damon Johnston.
Please go ahead, Damon.
It has live viewing capabilities. So if we hear that an officer is going to a hot call or is in need of assistance, you can tap right into the camera and view what's going on and you get a live location of that officer so you can locate him if he is not responsive or she's not responsive. So it has a lot of officer safety capabilities built into it that other products do not have. So I don't know if that helps.
Does that answer your question?
Lieutenant Johnson?
Yes.
You said the it has a live viewing capability. Is that the location of the officer? Is that the feed, the video feed?
Both. So the administration and the supervisors have the ability to look in live with what's going on. There's many applications for that as well, so.
Yeah. Okay, that's that's cool. I'd just make a couple of comments. I'm I'm very glad to see that we have the ability to do this. I've understood the departments looked at having cameras for a number of years. And so even in a in a year where it's been financially difficult, I I think it's great that we're able to bring this technology to the to to the department and also to the to the residents. Probably by waiting a little bit, we've got the latest and greatest, you know, some pretty remarkable capabilities are here.
And to that point, Tulowitzki, we are, by bundling it, any upgrades are automatically upgraded at the police department at no cost. It's part of the package.
And just like the wireless access access points that we voted on a bit earlier, everything we can do to automate and reduce frustration or administration for for the officers, I I think is really great so they can focus on the on on their work at hand. So thank you for doing the research for this and I'm excited to to be able to vote on this tonight.
And we want to thank the town council, Board of Safety and our town attorney for all the assistance and support embarking on this endeavor. It's a it's a large endeavor, but something that's new.
I I do wonder if we, if if there would be Lieutenant Johnston or or Chief Shekel, something that could be put on the website, some information about the capabilities or how it works or or something, just so that as people have questions about, do we have cameras or not? And and what can they do that we have an easy place for for them to go as? Is that possible?
Lieutenant Johnson and I already discussed this, as a matter of fact, this afternoon in his office. Damon worked very hard on this project and he did a great job. Yes, we were planning on putting something on our website to that effect.
Okay.
There's also a citizen program built into it so that way there is a way for us to give share information with the public using this for like maybe missing children or something like that. There's also a way for the citizens to upload evidence to us directly to our server to make it secure. So yes, there's lots of ways that we'll be interacting with the citizens with the software.
Okay, great. Is that integrated with Ring?
No, there's two companies, yes.
Okay.
Similar to that, yes.
All right. Any other questions?
I just would like to thank the police department for all their efforts in in reviewing this, researching this and really finding a program that really does integrate all the systems that we need. And it's just not a body camera. It's it's a fully integration system. systems that we need. And it's just not a body camera. It's it's a fully integration system that's going to help us with all our police work. I do appreciate all their efforts.
Good of that.
Definitely.
All right. Great. Thank you. Make yourself for the vote.
Sure. Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulwitzki.
Yes.
Both yes, Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Both yes, and President Mellon.
Yes.
Five to zero to enter into the agreement.
Right. Thank you. That takes us to the Hammond Water Raiding Group.
Yes. So what you have before you for your consideration is two engagement letters. One letter is for our outside counsel that we have selected as a part of the customer communities. There are five customer communities. That is Dyer, Griffith, Highland, Munster, and Whiting. We have worked together along with Attorney Wickland. And we would like to engage with Denham, Greenbaum, and Bingham and Jasper, Indiana, particularly to the city, but Denham generally, as our outside counsel. And it's, we have worked through this. We have received some documents, particularly the rate study on which the Hammond Water Works based those rates on, and have found some very significant question marks. And it would be wise at this point to also have our own expert. And we would ask that you allow us to engage with Ted Summer from the London Windy Group. So if you could, perhaps by motion and roll call, vote authorized me to engage with both Denham, Greenbaum, and Bingham, as well as the London Windy Group as our experts.
I think this is a great idea. I move we authorize the town manager to engage with Denham, Bingham, and Greenbaum, LOP, as outside counsel, and the London Windy as our expert.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? None? Can you please call for the vote?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulwitzki.
Yes.
Both yes, Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Both yes, and President Mellon.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Final piece of new business is resolution number 2078. It's the Katona subdivision approval of final plat for the fairway addition. And we have Mr. Vanderwood.
Earlier this year, the plan commission. Earlier this year, the plan commission approved a preliminary plat for the fairway addition, 25 block subdivision in the north corner of town. That preliminary plat allowed the developer, David Katona, Katona Development LLC, installing the infrastructure and the public improvements. No buildings, though, can actually be built on that subdivision or in that subdivision until the final plat is granted. Developer has now applied for that final plat approval. And in order for the plan commission to grant that approval, we need to verify that public improvements have been made in accordance with town standards. A warranty bond has to be submitted for those public improvements. Those two actions have to be completed by the town council. Any incomplete infrastructure or public improvements can be bonded for and accepted by the plan commission. We have reviewed, we have gone out and inspected improvements that have been completed thus far. Those are listed here in the memo. Storm and sanitary sewer, Castle Drive and River Drive, Curbs, Road Base Course and Road Binder Course, and the River Drive Parkway Trees and Seating. So those, those things have been completed. There are a few outstanding items that have not been completed. Those are the final road course, so the final grading of the and the light poles, installation of light poles. Those are the outstanding things for which the plan commission will request a bond. But the items that have been completed have been inspected. We've, as of the, it says in the memo, as at the time of the writing of the memo, we had not received the maintenance bond, which would be in a value of $111,388.45. Later that afternoon, I did actually receive those copies of those bonds. I haven't reviewed them in detail yet. So the recommendation that we're making tonight is that the resolution accepting those improvements would be made contingent upon the receipt of those bonds. But really, it's the it's the final review of those letters of credit. So yeah, we have, we provided a resolution to you, resolution 2078. By approving that, that resolution, you would be accepting the additional improvements as well as the maintenance bonds. According to the advice of a friend of mine here, the motion that we're recommending is actually to authorize the town manager to make some flexibility for sort of the final execution of that. It doesn't have to be done by them.
Okay.
Dave didn't recommend that. I recommended to Tom. So we didn't have to call you in because the plan commission meeting is tomorrow night. So it would be probably ideal if this were to be signed. And if your schedules didn't permit, then either Wendy, if you're more comfortable of Wendy, or myself, or even Tom, someone authorize someone to sign it. So it's just clean.
Okay. My, I can't always hear. I know. I was just a little confused.
These are the days.
Yeah.
Masks don't get any easier.
No. I see either. So.
The resolution will be available to sign after tomorrow night's plan commission meeting.
It could be signed at any time upon the approval of those letters of credit.
Okay.
The plan commission tomorrow, if this resolution has not been signed, will approve that final plat also conditionally upon this resolution. So there's a sort of a chain of events that needs to occur, one of which is this town council acceptance of the infrastructure.
And who?
Been completed now. Yes. The items that are listed in the memo, the storm and sanitary sewer, Curbs, Road Base and Binder Course, Parkway Trees and Seating, those have all been completed. That is the, those are the improvements that we're asking tonight to be accepted. There are only a couple items that are remaining. Those are the streetlights.
The swale.
Final grading of the swale and the final surface course of the road.
I will make a motion that we adopt and authorize the town manager or some other staff person, i.e. clerk treasurer and or who else was on?
Their choice.
Their choice. To sign the attached resolution to accepting the fairway addition storm and sanitary infrastructure, super infrastructure, curbs, road base course and binder course, and river drive Parkway Tree and Seating, upon final review of the town of Munster, of the maintenance bond or similar surety in the amount of $111,388.45 as a two-year guarantee of the improvements. Is that correct?
Yes.
Second, Tulwitzki.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions for Mr. Vanderwood?
My question, Mr. Vanderwood, is the $111,000, is is that surety for the items which are not yet completed? Do you mention the light posts and the swale, et cetera?
No, what that is, is that is 15% of the cost of the improvements that have been completed. And it's kind of like a guarantee for two years that if anything were to go wrong with any of those items, we would have some dollars available to go in and take them if the developer wasn't able to do so.
Okay. And with this resolution approved, pending approval from the plan commission of the final plat, then the project can move on to the next phase? Is that the proper understanding?
Yes. Generally speaking, what this would do is this would be the first piece towards approval of the final plat. The plan commission will be asked to do the second piece tomorrow night. And once that's completed, the developer will be able to begin constructing all of that in that subdivision.
And how about the few items that you mentioned that have not yet been completed? What role do they play?
The developer will post a letter of credit for those items at a at a value of 115% of the cost. That will be held by the town until those items are completed. Once those items are completed, the town can release that letter of credit.
Would that require then a further resolution?
Not by the town. To release the bond, yes. That'll be released by the town council by resolution. But to accept that bond, that's done by the plan commission as a as a component of their approval of the final plat.
Okay. So with approval of this, after this vote, if it's affirmative, then the, there's nothing developers requiring or waiting on from the council. It all is up to the plan commission after this. Do I have that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Any others?
My question is those other three items, the swale, the light post, and the final course, when are those, is there a timeline for those?
No, not necessarily. But as I said, we have the, we have the bond. We will have a bond placed to complete them if necessary.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's call. All right. When can you please call for the vote?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulwitzki.
Yes.
Both yes, Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Both yes, President Mellon.
Yes.
Five to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. We have no reports. The move to portfolio reports. Anybody have anything to tell us?
Well, the park department is working on, is discussing several of the complaints we heard last summer concerning Centennial Park, particularly grills, and paying to park. So no decisions made, but they're taking the suggestion seriously.
There's two items from the board of safety. One, the board of safety at their last meeting last Thursday, appointed our new battalion chief, Mark Heiduk, as our fire chief beginning or starting February 1st. That's upon the retirement of current fire chief, Dave Pelk. And secondly, I'd like to announce that Munster ranked number one in the 2020 National Night Out Against Crime Awards for populations of 15,000 to 50,000 people in that category. We ranked eight last year first this year. A big thanks goes out to certainly the police department, but also all the community's support that we've had in that program throughout the many years.
Is that a word for this year?
For this year.
Coming on top of last year's terrific.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
So different from each other.
Officer Grace was very hard to, you know, trying to make something out of the year.
He's a hard person to say no to.
He is.
Thank you. Do we have anything from Councillor Tulwitzki?
No, other than backup liaison to the board of safety. I was, I was, I was glad to be somewhat involved in the selection process. And I just congratulate the new soon-to-be fire chief, Mark Heiduk, for his, for his appointment.
Thank you. And Councillor Kulturitis, anything?
I do not have anything.
Okay. And I, what treasure miss?
I've got two very exciting things. One is that the council did approve for us to pursue some new financial software that's coming along nicely. We were in meetings all day today. We will be tomorrow and Wednesday as well with the new software company, discussing what our current procedures are and how they'll fit into the new software system. We're very excited about some efficiencies that we see and some new opportunities. And I think that everyone enterprise-wide will be happy with the new software. So I just wanted to keep you updated about that. It's a big investment and we're very pleased. The second thing is a little, it's from the Munster Civic Foundation. They generously have contributed to the lights in front. Public Works worked very hard filling the horseshoe with our existing light things. You know, those things. So they filled the horseshoe up. It looks very, very nice. We're really pleased.
Those are the trees.
The trees look very nice. The whole thing came together nicely. We're on the map for the education foundations display. We're not in the competition. And I believe we'll be on the Parks Department's map as well. So we hope to make this a destination of COVID, safe destination for the residents and from the region to drive through and appreciate some pretty Christmas lights, holiday lights.
All right. You can put those reports out. Our announcements all town council meetings will begin at 7:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Our next regular town council meeting is December 21st. The following one that is scheduled is for January 4th. It has been brought to my attention that we may not have a full attendance for the 4th because it's kind of like the holiday weekend is, leads over to Monday. I think the kids go back on Tuesday. So I know, Mr. Westlin, if we were to move that to the 11th, then that causes a conflict for you, correct?
It does.
It does. Okay. So this, can we discuss this on the 21st? Yeah, we'll save it for the 21st. Okay, so leave it as it is now. That brings us to adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is 8:09 and we are adjourned. Thank you for coming. And we'll move straight into redevelopment unless we need to take, we need to take a break. Real quick break. Okay. Okay.
Oh, no, we can do the redevelopment.
A redevelopment. Okay.
For three minutes?
You want to take a?
Before the meeting starts, congratulations, John, on your reelection to the school board.
Thank you very much. You guys are still with me for four more years.
We'll take you.
Welcome.
Okay, we can start.
Okay. So I, it is 8:10 and I call to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for December 7th, 2020. Are there any public comments? Nope. I'm sorry. Any emails that we received, Dustin?
We did not.
Okay. So close to, close the public comment portion of our meeting and move to the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions regarding the consent agenda? Seeing none, what treasure miss, can you please call for the vote?
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulwitzki.
Yes.
Both yes, Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
Both yes, and Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
That's five to zero. We did not officially do roll call.
Oh.
I was all ready to say president.
I know.
I apologize. I felt like I was missing something, but I forgot what it was.
Board Chuck is not going to be able to make it another minute.
Yeah, come on now.
Commissioners, are you present this evening?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
Commissioner Tulwitzki.
Present.
Present virtually. Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
Present virtually. And Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
And then we have, as noted earlier, our liaison to the school board, John Castro, is here in the building.
I apologize for that oversight. We have no old business, new business, or reports or announcements, so that brings us to adjournment.
I move we adjourn. So moved, or second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is 8:13 and we are adjourned. That was exactly three minutes, Chuck.
That was three minutes. I'm good.